I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, created in just one.
Okay, approval of the minutes for the monthly meeting on February 18th, 2021.
Hi there.
How you doing?
Okay, you got something special with it?
This is a building permit. I'm turning it in here. The thing that I...
Second, I'm sorry. Motion carried through the meeting, February 18th, 2021. Okay, we move district's comments like I mentioned. What we're gonna do after the, you speak, anything you have to say, we like to, if you go outside, if you have any other people who want to come in, keep them moving. We are only permitted to, like, keep five at a time in here.
I just have a building permit here. I didn't have a warrant really.
Oh, okay. All right, we're gonna take care of it.
Hey, thank you.
You got the money for our house?
I'm sorry, did you bring?
I need twenty dollars.
Sure, maybe.
See, that's a good secretary.
Yeah, she thought it was the most important part.
So you guys didn't think about that.
She used to work in a bar, so she makes the money.
I didn't have any funds, so I'll go out and get some money.
Yes, if you want.
Okay, I know, I can, but I'm gonna be down late.
Well, let your hotel open, Drew.
Nine o'clock, right now. Okay, Nancy, you're gonna be sitting in because of where your position is.
Yeah. Yeah, I had, well, one of the things I wasn't gonna talk about. My first question is, I, uh, the Office of Open Records had a video presentation with regards to COVID-19 in the sunshine. And I sent a letter back in late November to this board.
I watched those.
Did you watch it?
I did, yeah.
Okay, did you?
I am what?
Why? Didn't care. How about you, Jeremy?
I don't know why.
Okay. I also sent a letter to the Water Authority and copied the Board of Supervisors and the Sewer Authority. In that letter, the last paragraph was directly taken from the Office of Open Records. Do you understand there are financial consequences for each one of you for violating the sunshine? Do you understand that, Rick?
Yeah.
Okay, you do? Okay, you do, good, okay. Now, to move on, uh, recently, Senator Dush, uh, in his, uh, report to the, uh, the Citizen Review that he puts out online, uh, he's advocating that the constitutional amendment permitting the legislature to supersede the government or the governor's directive of a, uh, an emergency can be superseded by the legislature after 21 days. And I've sent you a letter about this. And I got a response, and in that letter, he states that the legislator is the most in contact with the ongoing issues in the state, and that is his grounds for asserting, or one of the grounds, asserting the legislature should be able to override the declaration of emergency. Now, hey, who'd ever thought what happens in Wuhan is gonna happen in Weeville, but it does. His response to me neglected the health aspect completely. Uh, you read it? So, you know, based on his assertions, uh, and it's just, I had some questions, which were included in the email, which I'm sure all of you have read, and I kinda like to go over those. So the first inquiry, has the board ever collectively or individually been contacted by anyone with the state legislature on this amendment? And what your participation might be, since he's so close to the local governing bodies? Anybody been contacted?
Not that I have.
Okay, well, Jeremy, you're...
With, by Dush himself, you think?
Yeah, well, his office.
No. Not about this, no.
Okay. So, I mean, uh, I'm not sure where he's coming from.
I'm, I'm, I'm not defending any of it, but, I mean, we've worked with Skarnati plenty through my years here.
Yeah.
We've worked with Gobbler plenty through the years, so I think that was the point he was trying to make. He's the point of contact for us, not the governor. We can't pick up the phone and get the governor. You know that, we all know that.
Well, I know that. But, I mean, he's saying here, he's, uh, closest in contact, and he's gonna be making decisions. But if you read the law or the proposed amendment, there's nothing in there to mandate they check with, uh, local governing bodies. So it seems to be a, a contradiction here. He says they're gonna, local governing bodies or local entities are gonna be involved, but yet there's nothing in the law. So I find that disturbing. In seeking advice prior to responding to any questions regarding public health, where would you look for guidance? I mean, you know, he was completely negligent in his response of discussing, uh, public health issues. So I'm not sure if, if somebody asked you, uh, is it safe to reopen everything? I mean, I think health should be a major consideration. So, I mean, where would you look for advice with regards to public health?
I always look on the PA.gov.
So there, but then that's going back, well, you know, the Department of Health.
I mean, that, that part of the website.
Yeah. But, you know, in Pennsylvania, there's only like about forty percent of the population that's under a local health department. I mean, I'm not sure where the Department of Health, they're getting reports from every, every county, because you can see them out there. But, you know, it, it seems like an ill-conceived thing to me.
Actually, boss, I did meet Senator Dush two weeks ago in Ridgeway. Joe Dagger introduced me come, you know, and talked a little bit, and just like Jeremy said, working with Skarnati, he said he wants to do, you know, follow in Skarnati's footsteps, help municipalities, everything he did, but he's make it on the block too.
Well, he's advocating this, Rick. I mean, uh, did you have an opportunity to discuss?
No, I was just, probably a two, three minute call.
Just an introduction, yeah.
And then interviewed.
Okay, if, I looked on the PSAT's website, and I couldn't find any statements on there with regards to the, uh, this amendment that's being proposed. Did you guys, was there anything in the magazine?
After your letter, I looked online, and I, and I looked at the last couple magazines, and they haven't touched on it either.
So there's nothing?
No.
Anything else, Paul?
Okay, uh... Okay, no, I think that's it.
Okay, you mind stepping out, let somebody else in?
Yes, I do mind, but I will.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, you leave, you're welcome to come back in.
Yeah, I'm gonna have Carney come here. I think he probably has something for the fire department, Carney.
Yeah, well, yeah, whoever.
Jim? You're the next in line.
I'm a gentleman, actually, made a great, uh, I'm just a gentleman, it's quite bizarre. First of all, I want to say thank you, gentlemen, for your response to my request, uh, right. I just wanted to, I wanted to know that while people, that, 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 that's the end of the report, your response was, certainly, uh, well done, overboard, a simple phone call and then a letter, but, uh, that's beside it.
Well, this way here, it's documented too, as a letter, so we have proof, not a me calling or being, or any of, it's documented that you did get a letter back from the...
Now, I'm repaying your response, not, not personally, okay? I just said, it was more a lot of what you needed to do, but, uh, uh, that's what you understand, because I don't, I don't wanna go, uh, by verbal, because I can't, I can't read the newspaper.
Mark, you wanna sign in, please, or continue, sorry.
And, uh, that one thing I wanted to, another thing is, okay, is, uh, this is for, uh...
Here's a man that came down and helped me, he was...
Really, uh... The reason why, why it was...
Different times I have, why she...
Because when my wife went and looked at it, she, my eyes were going, and she told me that it was a fiber.
It's a fiber glass plate.
Fiber glass plate, so I was looking, I couldn't pay the price, and, uh, as soon as I got in front of the guy, but she told me that it was busted out, and the bolts were busted out, and I asked her, she's out in Texas, she's actually out in the Gulf of Texas. But, did you look that at all?
Yeah, I saw it was up there.
There you go.
Huh?
Yeah, I, I seen it when we first got rid of the old truck, when he took it off.
Did you see where it was busted out, the bolts were busted out?
There was a crack in it too.
But I think that crack's been in there as long as I've been here.
Yeah.
You understand, if you didn't, right? When, when I asked her to evaluate it, told me, okay, if she evaluated it, well, I, I did not realize, uh-huh, that, you know, you gotta work a lot more money than that. I don't think that guy ordered the damn project.
Well, I, I can tell you one thing, I have a Western plow and no dump truck. I bought the controls on that, I went to Dewboys to get one, and it was like two hundred and almost three hundred bucks, and I ended up, Amazon, for like half the price, and just the control for that unit, whatever your bid was on that, we felt...
The point is, there's no control there. What you're gonna say, there's a control.
No, there's control and the frame and the plow, and there's even an underframe for a Chevy truck, it's all this whole...
Yeah, we have the control.
Oh, didn't see the control there.
Well, it's not, it's not outside, no, no, it's not outside. It's on a shelf.
Well, it's not, it's like, it's completely outside.
It's a complete setup.
Yes.
Including the control.
Well, you're in the house, so it's only up in the yard.
Well, yeah, that's just the plow, but everything, you know, the, the electronic parts are in here in box, and we went, we popped out.
Yeah, and, and you're, 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 you're right to say, wrong frame. If I say it, you're wrong frame, but if I write with the...
I guess it, to prevent confusion, you should ask, I guess, we don't write all that out longhand in the newspaper, because, you know, it costs money per letter. What's that?
I wouldn't be able to, period, immediately, really.
Well, what I'm saying, if you would've come in and asked her about it, you know, we would've been able to explain to you what was available, what it came with. Either way, we have a solid, so if you'd like to rebid it, you can rebid it, you know, when we put it back out.
Yeah, I understand. I would appreciate your interest in rebid.
Right.
One sixty-three.
I understand that, and we should have had an idea that, uh, what it's worth, and now...
Wait, 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 Mr. Crewe, all three of us decided not to accept the bid.
That's okay.
Yes.
The paper just said, uh, that the motion may be made, but...
Well, I'm the chairman.
And, 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 uh, I, uh, I, uh, I remember.
Yeah, well, like I said, all three of us, I made the motion not to accept the bid, die second, and here is in favor.
And it was strictly based on the price, because, and now that you know that it included...
Hold on, hold on, yeah.
Right.
And it stays in it, we have the right to reject any or all bids.
We shut right down everything that goes with it.
Well, and we, and we said, I think in your letter, we said, we notify you when we put it out, read it. When we read this.
Here you go. We got you, you want to find it by phone or, or something, or...
If you don't want, I see it back.
Okay.
Uh, maybe a thing I might ask you about today is that, like, uh, looking at the, the bills here from last month, February.
Okay.
I guess my question is, is like, whenever you get a bill from someone like, uh, um, who does your, your work, okay, but seeing that twenty-five hundred dollars exhaust, you get an itemized bill, okay? If I sent you a bill, twenty-five hundred dollars exhaust, and you would...
Oh, the in-room, the in-room bill, oh.
We do, we do get an itemized bill, it's broke down by the parts, the labor, et cetera.
Okay.
And this is just a summary.
No, because, you know, I looked at me, I had twenty-five hundred dollars exhaust.
Right.
Could've been an exhaust clamp, okay?
Yeah. No, it, it, it's actually broke down on an invoice, see, uh, you know, if it took two hours, you...
Everything that's listed here in the bills is just a summary, kind of an explanation for the meeting purposes, but there's a receipt to match all of it, and they're all these itemized.
I just wanted to get an itemized bill, not, it's just, you know, first of all, when you type out an exhaust, there's definitely a you take off, you know, but I know that the number...
The muffler, that particular, I think was disturbing once, and it was a high price again. Anything else, Duke?
No.
Okay, do you mind, uh...
Yes, I do, we're gonna have no ride.
You have no ride?
We're dropped off, and I'm, I'm very blind, and I'm going outside.
Okay, do we want Patrick to go?
I'd like to, um, I'd like to clear up some things that were, yeah, could've said, and after they said during the, like, the discussion of the last meeting, um, I typed it out, because these are all important, um, Jeremy, you said, I told Patrick to call the Conservation District and he never did. You also said, we spoke with Kate, and she said, can you, Patrick, to call me? I never heard that from Patrick, he never called. That was the beginning of October, I haven't even heard her. It was good talking to you today, because he's checking this house, um, if you want to, if you can, but I just wanted you guys to have that, um, pertaining to my...
That's, that's not a funny issue, Jeremy, I don't think.
Yes, hey, I'm just, these guys were, who was listening today to Solis House? When we were looking at the stream project?
Yep.
I don't wanna be on there, and she...
If she said it, she said it, but she also said it was nice talking to you on the ten. So she spoke to me, we talked, we, we talked.
She did, that was...
Well, you didn't get that remedy done anywhere near that date, correct?
It was, that was within one or two days of us meeting.
You, you had the permit?
We started the application process, absolutely.
And then when did you get it finalized?
I don't know the specific date, okay, but I don't wanna use up all my time, because we can, I can research that for you, I know, you want, but we started the ball rolling. Uh, pertaining to my request to the board, Jeremy, you said, he doesn't meet any of the criteria of Municipal Authority Act, he's not a taxpayer, property owner, or business owner in the municipality, by today's standards, he does not meet the criteria. Rick, you were up to pay a water bill, I told you I didn't want my uncle's will in circulation. You said you understood and told me to show it to Jamie and one other supervisor, so I did.
You did.
I showed it to you and Jamie, you didn't say, you didn't speak up at the last meeting. You didn't say anything about that, you know?
We advertised him.
Is it, I'm not a taxpayer, there's a copy of the check.
Is it, is the property transferred, Patrick?
No, it's, okay, so I'm also not going to give you a copy of this key.
No, I don't wanna see the will, is it...
If it's not transferred, I...
No, it takes, it takes time.
I understand it takes time, but it's still just the, the practicality of it, is what I'm saying.
It takes, it takes time, and really, that's none of your business to know what the status of the settlement is.
It is for putting somebody on the board by the criteria of putting somebody on the board, I don't want the status of your...
You would think that would be good, but anyhow.
Not on the water.
If you choose not to reappoint me, I respect that decision, but be truthful about your reasons, don't, my water bill is attached to my application, don't, don't say I'm not eligible, because I don't meet any of the criteria. So it's in the process, I, it's by default, you know, it's not a, you know, I just, I just wanna clarify the facts, um, uh, I labeled one email, you've gotten at least two emails from me, uh, as the operating plan, yet you ignore them and acknowledge all the letters from the high rate customer that's had a bone to pick with the water authority for over twenty-five years. If you would've reached out to the water authority directly rather than listen to biased interpretations, I feel that this all cleared up very quickly, um, same thing, property emails, I want you guys to have, from Winkie One, with, we have. Uh, pertaining to the stream crossing, like we spoke earlier, uh, Patrick came to me first, wasn't in the original scope of the work, should've been there from the get-go. Clarify the stream crossing, I brought, I told me, Rick, when we went through the forest area after the one call came in, like I said, within a day or two of that email, um, we discussed the stream crossing, and you both said you called the county, see what we could do, and I thanked you for it out multiple times. It wasn't the original scope of the work, DCEB and HUD can't update for stream crossings. Uh, it was going to be our cost, no matter what, we can't, but you can call Tracy, we put Tracy here for two different, Jeremy, you said it was nineteen thousand dollars fifty feet, it's still over a hundred feet, um...
Okay, I have a question on that. If it was in the original scope of the work, why did you not pay for a change order?
Why would it be a change?
Why did you pay them extra money if it was in the original scope of the work?
Change orders, that would've been that they would've paid for it then, change orders were, were to the county.
Why did you pay more money outside of the bid, the bid amount, if it was in the original scope of the work?
I understand what you're saying, that cost is for water authority, uh, we don't make change orders to water.
But when the project was bid by the Continental Guard and all the other ones, but did it state the cross Cherry Road?
It was in the plans.
But why wasn't it...
Because HUD can't pay for it.
It's not, it does not put in...
Well, when they bid it, they bid the plans, they didn't bid knowing what HUD would or wouldn't pay for.
Because from the beginning, Tracy said, they can't pay for it.
But then Continental charged you...
Yes, we have to pay.
More.
No, the water authority hasn't paid for that.
So when you give your grant money, the nineteen thousand or whatever you paid for that, the total package of Continental didn't go up by nineteen thousand?
That was a separate bill from Continental to the water authority.
For nineteen thousand across Cherry Road?
No matter which way you skim the cap, the water...
But when they bid it originally, that was part of the deal?
No, no, that's separate, that cannot be part of the grant project. I, I, we're going to service, if you need clarification, you can talk to Tracy, they, that was not part of the original, it was in the plans, but they can't fund it, that cannot be paid on, that funded, but that was not part of the Continental's bid.
It was not part of anybody else's bid venue there?
Right, it's not allowed to, okay, it can't be.
So you, but why did it take till the very end to get that bid out, then? If you knew that was the beginning, why was confusion in the beginning?
So I understood what Tracy said, she said it has to be done outside of that project, which meant separate from the grant funding. Brian interpreted that as after the project was completed done. So after talking to you guys, we talked to Tracy, I talked to Kate, we realized, okay, it just needs to be separate funded, so we got the ball rolling on it, uh, it didn't matter whether there's some beginning of the project, end of the project, it's gonna cost, and, and water authority had to pay for that work.
It would've prevented a lot of confusion had somebody been on top from the beginning, and that's fair.
Yeah.
That's why I didn't understand why you waited till you're almost done to say, oh, we have a...
It was on my part, there was confusion on Brian's part, but the thing is, it got done, and we were stuck with that bill no matter what.
Because actually, the day after we come back here, we made phone calls to...
Yes, yes, no, you didn't, I appreciate that, because that, that really outgitted the ball rolling.
Yeah, and the day that I called Kate for you, she said, have him call me today, I'll get it done this week, and I know it wasn't done that week.
That was, it was, the one call from Continental came in the first week of October, like, within a couple days, and I think she emailed us within days of that, so don't say it.
I think we need with that, like...
That you got the ball rolling, but she wanted you just to come over and get it done, and she would take care of it that week.
They had to give us, they had to give us the application, I worked on Brian, and he...
You were supposed to return a couple of days.
That was in October, yeah.
I don't know how many days past, you're...
No, I mean, you're...
I think she, regardless, you said I never talked to her, I did, I did, so...
And, and that was a conversation that she had with us, we, we went something else.
They all remember that.
I don't know that she said she never, never talked to you, that she never followed through with it, is what she said.
Well, the, at that point, it was out of my hands, I had never filled out a GP five by hand, so, you know, more about that than I do, but we, I had spoken to her, the ball was rolling.
She, well, I think, and I told you in this conversation way back, the night we meeting again, it doesn't matter, it's water and script. She was going, yeah, no, no, what I wanted you to do, what I tried to set up for you is if you would've went to her, she would've walked you through it right in her office and had it for you the same week, that was what I had asked her to do. And they're not hard to do, I did a bunch of GPs on our first flood, and I had, never had any experience with it.
Regardless, it's, it got done, and that was gonna be the last thing.
But actually, that nineteen thousand dollars could've been put in in a bid project now, absolutely.
No.
No.
No, it couldn't be in the project, but it could've been bid before the project, before the project started.
We could've bid it separately, yeah.
The way that it went out and bid to multiple bidders, it looked like, oh, we, we forgot this, or we messed it up, or whatever.
Right, it was after the act, but, but everyone that bid on the project did receive an opportunity to bid on that.
We did just to do that.
Yes, including the more one that Joe was talking about, um, I don't know if I'll be known about time, I do have a closing comment, but I have other stuff to talk about, okay, that's one moment, so, uh, pertaining to spending money, gate and building additions are discussions, it better be discussed in working meetings and behind closed doors, um, this is how the board properly decides whether or not to do something. At this point, there's no actual decision on the gate, Guy, you asked me if the electric gate is necessary, no, it's not, that's why we have a separate code for repairing the gate without the upper and with the upper. Julie said a slide gate and a padlock are sufficient, I agree. Rick, you mentioned about the building addition, and the building addition would be for stores of trucks and equipment, it would not be for, it might be...
I was told that the addition, we were needing to be held there or not, from this...
There's, there's already plenty of room at the water authority shop. So it wouldn't be an addition if you pull the trucks out, there's...
There's no heat in the rest of that building, correct?
There is now.
Oh, you already put it in there?
Yep, we're waiting on the gas company to run their line, but it's there. The electric bill for the office is around three hundred dollars, where the winter gas should've been around there a few years ago, to save the cost. Uh, Jeremy, you said the water authority is not paying attention to the community about opening meetings, our meeting is first, then sewer, then township, you called your upper meeting before, or after both authorities had their meetings, sewer discussed opening theirs at their March meeting, um, we discussed the status of our next meeting, so, next meeting, I mentioned earlier, our next meeting will be on Zoom. As I said, if not for videos, we wouldn't be in compliance, we've been posting audio since this, also, we're, we're the most compliant of three boards to be getting, um, I offered in the joint meeting to have this meeting with sewer, we heard nothing back, it's not being planned, and I think possibly around the week, it's like the twentieth, possibly Thursday, twentieth, um, somebody mentioned losing our focus of community service, our focus has always was providing safer water, as far as I'm concerned, um, can an employee be on the board, yes, the set employee has to abstain from all conflicts of interest, I have no problem with that for the last four years, uh, Jeremy, you said, they're ruling in the same direction, and it's against the grain of the product, it's, it's a realistic thing to agree with everything the supervisor wants to do, it's a five-person board, not everyone's been three, there's thirty-something. I guess back to the stream crossing and stuff, Jeremy, you said, they don't even know if their bill's going to be from the engine here, but it's also probably going to pay a hundred fifty thousand dollars, so it's clearly making up for it, you know, it's going on. At the beginning of the project, we had an estimate, um, we increased it by four thousand dollars, um, ended up not using much of that, because I did all the inspection for the stream crossing, um...
I'm gonna start with this, the whole project, what are you paying for engineering for the whole project? It was almost a hundred thousand dollars when I left the board.
Yeah, that was the estimated, that's, that's the estimate, we're, we're around, is about ninety-five thousand dollars, like it was, yeah, they, they only approved it, extend that by four thousand.
Did you already pay for the inspection, who did the inspection on site during the phases up there?
The, the ease group.
So you paid probably a monthly bill and then along the way as well?
Yeah, but that was part of that.
Which I'm sure wasn't cheap.
No.
So when you add it all up, I mean, I'll, I can put a record request in, but I'll bet the hundred fifty thousand is realistic, no?
No, because they're still at that ninety-five thousand dollar number.
That, inspection services were not in that four or five thousand.
It was after.
Well, I hope that you made that, got that writing somewhere, because it wasn't when we said everything else to re...
Part of what Brian's telling you, so, they also, uh, somebody said they all just shake their heads, yes, when was the last time you guys were, we all mostly agreed with each other, and we're all usually on the same page, it's logical, not everybody agrees sometimes, though, our board is plenty of times, we disagree. Guy, you mentioned about needing to take care of the road we screwed up, we didn't screw up the road, contract to cut the road, patch the road, it will be restored to your spec within the next couple months, so, they're gonna, they'll patch it at those spots now, so they just...
Well, I'll address that one, because when we met you in person, and we said, where's the line gonna be, and you said it's gonna be over here to the left of the road?
That's what I, was, yes.
It's not, it's not where you told us it was gonna be, it's not in the middle of the road, what do we tell you? What do we tell you? We don't want it in the middle of the road, because we don't want valves in the middle of the road, because we don't want you to have to dig up our road over and over and over again. Which is, this is, is a fair thing to ask, that we don't want to have the road dug up multiple times for multiple.
We've all been to St. Mary's, we've all been to Dufois, there's valves in the middle of the road everywhere.
Well, that's our road that you asked for an easement, and, and we said, sure, but we don't want valves, and we don't want the line in the middle of the road, because when there's a break, and where you, you know, you get a break, where there's a connection, we're gonna have to dig up our road again.
We'll have to repair it to your spec.
Is half the road getting paved or the whole of it?
They're, I think they're going one foot beyond each, each cut.
Yeah, so it's going to be a patchwork next time, and that was one of our bitter roads.
It'll be smooth, it will be smooth.
It will be for a year or two, and then it's going to start to settle. I'm not against you, it's just that we know, we cut roads, we know what happens.
They're under contract for two years, if anything happens, we're going to.
I know, I talked to Brian about that mess up there last Friday or whatever, where it was sinking.
Yeah, and that's, that's because of the cold patch and the frost coming up, I think. We've been maintaining that as we've.
Did you, did Brian talk, you weren't in that day. I called Jim a little bit, and I talked to Brian. Since you're here, and you're the guy out there doing it, did Brian talk to you after I spoke to him?
He got really happy.
What I think is happening, and I don't know, what, did you just put more patch in at that?
Yeah.
Okay, because I told him, you gotta get Continental come in and re, redo that. One, two, they're gonna have to put something in the top end of that ditch. They dug it from the top of Pine all the way to Cosminsties, it's now a French drain. It's always going to pull that water right down through there, it's always going to sink that road, and it's going to sink Alfredo's yard, and they're already complaining, you know? If, if you don't put a clay dam, like a plastic block or something in the top end of that ditch line, it's always going to do that. And if you, go up the water company's side streets and look and see what the sewer line did, because it's the same way. With a French drain coming down the middle of a road, in the middle of a hill, it's always going to carry the water out of both sides.
Well, Brian and I will relay the message on that, it's no problem.
Yeah, and I talked to Brian about it, and I just, you know, I wasn't, I'm not being a jerk, I'm just trying to tell you there's a problem there before you, with good blacktop over it, do it, you know, remedy the problem, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Um, I mean, and I agree with you at the time, it's less than I'd feel where the locations were, but there's so much spaghetti in the ground there, for you to put it pretty close. Julie mentioned, have you ridden down Elm Street lately? After I heard about that, I checked Elm, doesn't seem to be my issue, I don't know if she's been simulated or what, but the township charges to fix our cuts, they are smooth. From what I can see, the sinking areas don't seem to be hard for anyone. So if they are, I'd like to see them address it, but as far as I know, that is well taken care of, last year we drove through. Just a good clue, uh, this, the discussion at last meeting was really disrespectful and unprofessional. I don't have a problem with that, if you, I have no reason to. We may disagree on some things, but I try to keep a level of professionalism. What I most have said not as high as publicly speaking, professional or electionary, but I get it, I've got already, also now on Facebook, I'm sure, I just hope that doesn't hurt that. The politics, politics here have become worse than I could have ever imagined. There's stuff that I can't say yet, it's worse than you three could ever imagine. It is bad, when I'm able to tell you, I will, but.
No, it's all good, so let's stop.
No, I'm not saying that you're a part of it, but the events that happened in the last two years are starting to cost you personal money. It's stressful, just, I can't elaborate right now, when I can, I will. It's essentially legal matters at this point, you know, you can't discuss legal matters, I, I can't, I don't really think, but it's personal, it's bad, and I'm just asking you guys, please don't leave it worse. If you have any questions, like the emails said, please reach out to us, please.
You know, we know you did restraining orders and stuff against people.
I did not personally.
I didn't say personally, when I say you, I mean the water company.
Okay, yeah, it's.
Patrick, uh, maybe that's what you're talking about.
No, 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 I'm, I've, I have my own personal fees into this, it's so bad, that's why I'm saying.
As far as your comments, you good?
Yes.
I just have one rebuttal for Patrick. I would just like to know, why the water company is so negative about having their meetings in this building?
Because it's easier to have it up there, secretary doesn't have to do it, we have the space. I don't, Jamie, can I?
Well, how about you though, because you can only fit five people in that time office, which is crowded.
No, it won't be the front office, it'd be the shop side, you can fit more people up there. So it's ea, it's easier for us, because everything's already there.
But for years, you know, when I was on the board and when Jeremy said, they were always here, there was never.
Yeah, there's never been an issue with having meetings here, either chairs, the tables, the room.
Derek, he doesn't have that much time.
Here, here's the other thing, Patrick, I don't know what you have in there, but when I was the chairman there, it was pull-up tools and equipment and, and.
We move the shelves around, you can fit both trucks in there, if you have, like where the bay is, you can see all the way through. So if we pull the trucks out from that plant, there's no.
It's just the idea, again, as part of this, this thing that, that you have going, where you don't want to. Associate with the township, I mean, we weren't the ones that started this process of miscommunication.
Well, I mean, if you want to talk miscommunication and merge, there's a lot of unanswered questions.
Yeah.
I, I'm not completely fundamentally against it, they should have been merged from the get-go, they should have been one in the beginning. But we're talking to everybody, and I still don't know, so we still don't have the answers question. Who's going to get laid off?
Nobody said anyone would.
Whose job is safe, you're trying to save money.
That's, I don't want to get involved, that's a workshop, other than a township meeting.
Every time, every time, it's political answers.
But you, you might always jump to the negative side of it, and you, no one's even discussed anything like that.
I mean, I'm biased, I have the job there, but I don't want to see them go without an operator, but it's going to cost them money.
Okay.
Am I going to take a pay cut, is Justin going to get laid off, am I going to get laid off, am I going to have?
That'd be, if it would consolidate, that would be up to the new board to, right?
That could happen with any job, you're just trying to take your chance.
So if I, if we, I guess my opinion is, like, tonight, it probably won't matter, I think we're going to appoint somebody, but until I can get a real answer on who's going to keep their jobs, who's going to, if there's going to be a pay cut.
Is that be up to the board?
I mean, it is an upgrade. So, correct, so do you care what happens, who gets laid off?
I'm just going to, there could be great more jobs.
Oh, that would be nice.
You never know, it could reduce, we could have one building to cover everything, say paying all these bills.
Wasn't, yeah, we started with a basic, and we don't, we don't want to get churned back into that last meeting that we had, and I know it's been a long time ago, past COVID, but the reason we asked the two unit groups to get together was to look at the pros and cons of it, try to come up with that system. I don't think, if you add up all the hours that you have working, three full-time people, you know what I mean, the sewers doesn't have anybody working full-time hours, maybe, maybe Cory's getting close to it.
He's close, they should.
But again, there, there is a system out there that works, and that's all we tried to tell you that night then.
Totally, it's just.
That you'll eventually get together, and if you want to use our garage again, where there's lots of room, available.
I, from my understanding, I don't know if the sewer even wants to discuss the version, we're trying to, I guess, solve our problems. Otherwise, from what I've heard through the great.
What you do, now, to, to, I mean, I can't speak for your board, what you do down the road, it should be operated. Okay, they don't have an operator, they need an operator, hopefully they get an operator. We need operators, we need guys in the field, it's not the question of who goes or who, that's not it at all, it's just, again, looking at the big picture to see how you can do it better. You agree, it should have been from the beginning, and they didn't come in at the same time, so they didn't ever do that, but.
Well, I'd go back to the board and say, you want to make that call again to that company that comes in and runs both entities? And gets the manager and runs the show.
It's a, it's a possibility.
Then it's somebody in the community doing it, you can't accuse anybody of doing something against you.
I guess the scary part was the comments that were like, oh, we didn't know you were already essentially the manager of the water authority. It doesn't sound like I'll have any opportunity to step in that position, and so. It makes me wonder who.
Well, no, you get the operator.
Right, if they join, will I be able to manage both? I'm surely interested, but it didn't sound like there's any.
Well, like, that's, like, that's, nobody can say it.
It's a workshop.
Nobody can say our jobs are safe.
I mean, that probably would be too operating.
Okay.
Before, Jim? Yeah, before Patrick, you, you dismissed, Patrick, are you as a board going to sign the new board member, water board member today?
Well, we have the app, and we're going to go through it on the business.
Are you going to sign?
Well, if we get the votes, which it tends. End it with that, either way, I'm not going to hold any data.
Yeah, I mean, you have another, there's four actually now. We'll get to that in their business. Anything else, Jim?
Yeah, I want to do, actually, before you leave, Patrick, Carney's here with a Pine Avenue issue with the. That's, I don't want you to leave, oh, go ahead, Carney, Jim, I'm sorry, bear with us.
I'm just here representing my financial interest at one ninety-three Pine. And, uh, Rick knows, my mother just battled cancer, lost her battle the last fall, and so I didn't pay attention to this. Mary Ellen's my cousin, I am her only relative. I got the ball a couple days ago. From the pictures that she has from October the twenty-sixth, a water line broke before that, took out her driveway, flooded her basement, flooded her furnace, and her basement is full of mud, her back porch is full of mud. Where she parks her car is a silk bed. She walks into her house through an inch of silk. She's asked numerous times for some help. I went down last night, put a look at it, the driveway is gone, I put limestone in it last year when I replaced her water line in that.
Doctor Silkhouse.
The, uh, the valves, there's a hole that I think you could lay a fifty-foot yard drum down in the middle of her driveway, right where you come off the township road. She can't even pull her car in there, down her driveway. She's asked and been nice. There's a bell in the middle of her driveway. I don't know who drew these plans or who decided to do this. Then I just put a brand-new water line in for her from up on the bank where the tap was. They moved the tap to the middle of her driveway where she parks her car and turns around. So she has two taps, I was on the Houston Township board for twenty-six years, I have a little bit of knowledge. Why would you put shut-off valves in the middle of somebody's driveway to drive over? It's just like they're saying about putting them in the middle of the road, going down the middle of the road. It's my understanding that she signed an agreement with the water authority for the easement. She did not sign an agreement with contractor. I have a, a estimate from Servpro for forty-five hundred dollars to clean the mold out of her house, and the mud out of her basement that you guys put in it. When I say you, maybe the contractor did it, but you signed the agreement with her. I have a verbal bid until he can get down here and look at it for a new boiler, because it's all rusty and it's full of mud. I don't have a bid on the driveway yet. I want to know, are you going to do something, and how quick are you going to do it? Because my next step in the next couple of days is going to be a legal one, and it's not going to be good. Now, I can now to tell these guys about it, and I'm very glad you're here, because now I can tell you what's going to happen, because I can't come to your meeting, because you don't allow visitors. So we just got the wrong person a little upset. So we need to do something, we need to do it immediately, I want that house cleaned. And if the furnace guy says it needs a furnace, I want a furnace, and I want a driveway. And as they said about digging the ditch down the middle, she now has a water runway, she almost couldn't get in her door for the ice buildup, that just runs down her driveway and flooding her parking area and into her back porch now. So here again, we're going to need some drainage at the top of her driveway to get rid of all this water that's running down there.
Um, whenever the leak happened, it was right after they connected.
I'm sorry, okay.
When they, when the leak, the big leak happened, it was right after they connected the water line for the old. Because they exposed our transience, it was brutal and blocked. I guess, I guess they were in to look at it, um, at the time, she said she wasn't worried about it, but I mean, multiple takes time to go to that.
On October twenty-sixth, yeah, she wasn't worried for a couple of years. So also taking care of her mother. I have, it's March.
Yeah, I, I contacted Continental Construction, Smorman, informed him about it.
I'll go back.
I haven't heard anything about it, I haven't called him again, I did give her their phone numbers as well. Any damages from that leak, it's my understanding, should be covered by their industry insurance. Because I don't want to, because of that.
But basically now, my label will be one down the block, because I have nothing to call back, yeah.
So, yeah, so as far as the easement goes, I'm relying, just put a line there. I thought they put the new valve piece to the existing valve. That's where that sealant went out.
And I don't need to take up your time.
No, that's, she's a bitch, like you said, when Mary Ellen contacted Jay, she was about the road, and the road is, the road was made for the water to run down our drive, which has never been that. I mean, she, she did express to me about in the past before the water, there's a lot of pressure on the road, but that's, that's something between you and her, your review, my, my.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's for the road.
And there's, yeah, and many valves breaking in the water drive, along with the safe hole.
Is this the board's fault?
They should, there's a possible. They have people, they have. But, uh, so that's all silk, great, where they are.
It's the main valve, not the service valve.
Well, the service valve too, there's her basement, do you?
Yeah, I would be happy to.
Six months?
Yeah, I agree. I will, I'll call their.
That's her furnace will not be empty. As far as I'm concerned, I think her furnace is drilled. And I will have an expert begin to. How about you, your?
No, I would be happy to, I will get a hold of that again tomorrow, and just try to get it down here.
I would do two, Patrick, yeah.
There's her tap in the middle of the, it used to be.
No, 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 my husband passed away, and he left everything.
I don't have to picture it, but it used to be over here, now it's right here.
Yeah, they were supposed to.
I would do, Patrick, this is suggesting, you know, when you get the former, whoever you're giving contact, get in contact with Carney, the new, with the individuals too, that, 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 and that way, I mean.
I'm just going to suggest the same thing, exchange information, please keep this conversation evolving.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
You can shoot me a text.
Either, either way, if Continental's insurance, or the cover, I still.
Well.
We will, we will be getting.
Get in contact with Carney.
I don't hear from him by next Friday. I'll just give you your, all your contact information from my lawyer.
I'll, uh, yeah, your telephone's on here.
Call cell, I'm with a direct cell.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you a text with my, my work.
Okay, because six months is enough.
Right, and I agree.
And I've already spoke to my lawyer, it's a pretty cut and dried case, so.
Absolutely.
I'd like to, I'd like to be friendly about it, just get a text. So.
Okay, good, Carney?
Appreciate your time, thank you, guys.
Patrick, anybody next in line? Jim, stay in line. Uh, just a concern, Ryan, since we have videos out here, and we have warm room out here, these truckers, where you can open it up, where you don't have people standing outside, why can't you guys consider adding meetings out of the truck room list? To commentate to people from standing outside.
Just like you said, these, the meeting is five people.
Yeah.
Five people to this room, this is a small room, that's.
Well, you guys did the same thing.
Wait, wait, the water company.
I'm not on the board on the water company, I have no say on that, but they do, they do, I'm just saying.
Honestly, honestly, Jim, I think the last two months are the only time we've had any more than five show up. And to be honest.
Well, it's just disgusting, I come down, it's frustrating, not disgusting.
Well, in the last meeting.
Second time that I was outside.
The last meeting, the, the two guys that were here for a permit, we took care of it, ran away, and I came out to get you, and you'd already.
Well, you said, we're only allowing, you're backwards, we're only allowing five people.
At the time, when I said.
Six stated that, and five, and then like Joe came and.
Right.
And I, I told Joe to say we're not allowing anybody else in. Rick came out today and explained, once you have your comment, you can come in, well, then I waited. But to answer my question, can you consider using the other room?
Yeah, the only reason, we did that, we did that with the bigger group of board members and stuff, but the only thing is about that, all those people were affiliated with the township. There's things out there that would be probably our insurance company wouldn't like, like we have iron, iron cutting edges laying on the floor, there's ways for people to get hurt out there, open grates in the floor, there, you know what I mean, there's powder tools, we'd have to pull the trucks out with the winter material on them, there's things that would not be conducive right now to that, you know? And I, I think every month, we're hoping that this is, we can open up, we can open up a bidding there. But, yeah, I mean.
You see over fifteen percent.
Yeah, but he started to loosen restrictions after, he started, what he's saying, so might be different next month.
Then, my second comment, and I haven't seen you guys do it, but, uh, Rock Hill Road, last time I was on Rock Hill Road that says don't winter maintenance, do you guys plow the Rock Hill Road?
Just down to, well, right now, to the bottom of the hill past the Rock Hill Lodge is. And there's a turnaround in right, right below, right where it flattens off.
So you're not coming all the way down Rock Hill?
No, we only own it to like, Chicago's camp.
That's Ben's that time.
That's Ben's that direction. You know where Chicago, the, the Buttermilk Lodge is there?
Yeah.
That's still in J Township, when you go past there, you're in that direction.
So then the sign is there at the Buttermilk, or is it up above that? There was a sign up there, I thought I was on top of the hill.
Just before you break down over the hill, there's a sign that says no winter maintenance. That way, so people don't go down there, and it is plowed down the hill at the bottom, but that's where we stop. So if you, if you unknowingly drive down there, you're not going to make it through, as well.
How far is that, another mile to last?
From where? From there to five fifty-five?
Out to the Buttermilk Lodge path.
Probably a mile or two.
Okay, so plowing township road with more winter maintenance.
We are or we aren't?
Yeah, well, you just said to plow beyond the sign.
Well, because that's, well, the sign's been there since it, before the business was there, that's on that building, so we got. So we gotta plow that. And then beyond that is camps, and if we get a big storm, we'll plow down to a turnaround at the line. But only if we get big ones, we don't do it.
And I know this has been a bad winter, and I'm sure you've got a lot of complaints, and I don't know how you set your priorities, but just saying that roads that are plowed, maybe this should be put on in back burner or whatever, I don't know how you do that, and I'm not.
No, they used to turn around at the top of that hill before the guy built the business down there every week. Not plow out of a business, do the same as somebody build a house down there, we'd have to go first. That's just the way it works. If somebody built up on the dump road, we got to plow. There's nothing, you know, we can't just say, oh, you're on your own, because you moved up on the dump road. You know, it's a township road, so.
Anything else? Is there somebody else up there, Brandon?
I want to speak. I wasn't here at the last meeting. Okay, I thank you all for cutting me down for twenty minutes. I am on the water board. And like Patrick said, you guys were told that we could not for that nineteen thousand, that we had to pay for that. That was a no bid, it was nothing. And you know that in October. Because I didn't find out to October, then I knew it had to go out for bid. Mr. Ellis Reddick, you know what it takes to go across the creek? What you have to do?
Yes.
What do you have to do?
Get a power permit.
Then what else? Last meeting you knew everything, grew ya? What do you have to do?
When you, when you beat that, when I know, did we say permits were involved?
Everything was involved. Well, you, what you were saying, it wasn't worth nineteen thousand dollars.
It shouldn't have been.
Nineteen, you, you understand what has to go on? That's why I'm asking, do you know what has to be done in there? What, what has to be done?
What did they do?
You know what, you listened to Jim Huff. You all agreed with Jim's hustle, Jim Huff letter last month, when you sat here. Every one of yous, and not one of yous know what actually had to be done in that creek.
Tell us.
Well, there's a whole pile, you have to cement it, and it was more than fifty feet. It wasn't just fifty feet.
When I was approached about this, and they couldn't cross the creek, I said, everyone makes sense, you put a new line, you have transit for fifty or a hundred feet, you defeat your purpose.
Alls I know, I knew it in October, I didn't know it till then, I just got on the board. But you sat here last month like it was the wrong thing, you spent nineteen thousand dollars, you didn't know what you were doing. I sat and listened to my tape. Okay, and that is not true, which you found out, you didn't know that. And you should have known, before you.
But you all had been taken care of from the beginning.
No, it wouldn't have mattered, you still had to put it out for bid.
Yeah, but why would I have it?
You still had to be put out for bid, no matter what, if it was a spring.
When you're paying an engineering company.
Listen, period, but it was separate, it was separate. It was separate.
I know that, but the engineering company still should have had that out there before the garage.
Listen to the tape, and you guys still thought it should have been under the first project.
Should have been.
It's not the way it was.
The money from the D C V, the county.
It didn't do it that way. It didn't do that, that way. From the beginning, they knew that that cross, for that creek was not gonna be approved. I went and called her myself when I found out. And she told me that everybody was told, that that crossing, creek crossing, was not.
Included.
Included, okay? So you guys sat there not knowingly and run me in the ground, spending nineteen thousand dollars that you had no clue what has to be done. And how far has to be done? We put it out for bid to the Eads Group, that's what you're supposed to do, it has to be engineered. We took the lowest bid, that's what the board's supposed to do. So next time you run me down, you better know what you're talking about. And it was more than fifty feet.
Was it just you though?
It was everybody, everybody on the water board.
Yeah, but I didn't hear him say that.
I'm on the water board.
I know, but I didn't hear him say that.
They better know what they're talking about.
Brandon, I talked to them in October, okay? That's the point that I made. I talked to them in October, I talked to the Conservation District on the water authority's behalf. Rick talked to the commissioners on the water authority's behalf. I told Patrick the conversation that we had, everybody was trying to play a ball there in October. This didn't happen until when? This was our complaint.
I knew about in October.
It's okay, yeah, everybody knew about it, but nobody reacted until it was down to the last minute. And your engineers are the ones that let you down.
Listen, the price would not have been any different.
Well, you don't, okay.
I'm just saying, you can't change that price.
Okay.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
But you still knew you had to cross that stream, so it should have been.
We, we were working on that in November, we had to put bids out and everything.
Right.
So that takes a whole month or two.
And again, this, this, I was still on the board.
Because, listen, I don't know, I just sat on here four months ago. I don't know, I didn't know about it at all till October. And when I found out about it, I called down there like you, I didn't know why it wasn't. She, I called her, the engineer knew it. Because I brought it up to the board, if you watch my tape, the engineer knew it, and I gave him hell for not bringing this up to the rest of the board to not know it.
Exactly.
So don't blame the rest of the board. Okay, get your facts, I got my facts. Okay?
You done yelling?
Well, yeah, I'm done yelling, because I was very pissed that you didn't know.
I was very upset after that meeting, back in a year ago, when I left and all of a sudden our supervisor's no good, our workers don't do nothing.
That was nothing to do with me.
Chairman.
That was nothing to do with me.
That upset me pretty bad.
That's good, that's nothing to do with me.
Yeah, they talked terribly about you.
Yeah.
That's not me.
I know, but if you're more, if you're more.
Okay, but I'm just saying, when you're talking about me, I know what I'm talking about. That nineteen thousand, and I want the town to know that that nineteen thousand had to be spent. Would we save money in the spring putting it out for bid? Maybe, maybe not. But I don't think we would have saved that much to make any difference.
Here's my point, Brandon, and this is all the point I was making. I was still on the board when we got awarded this grant, two years ago.
Yeah.
Two years ago, you're paying an engineer over a hundred thousand dollars, we all know it.
And I want to tell you another thing.
That slipped through the cracks to the very end of the project, that's, that's not.
And I, I'm with you, I'm with you on that.
Somebody's not.
Another thing is, I listened to this guy, and I did not know nothing about that.
That basement, yeah.
Okay, I will call, you gotta remember, we got talked down for spending for an engineer. To come down, the engineer engineered all that job in force. But we paid, and I thought it was kinda stupid too. But now that we're at this point, I'm glad we paid for the Eads Group to come and inspect the whole job.
And they were supposed.
So don't, when you call, you call me, because I'll call him, and the Eads Group, they had a man there the whole time the job was going. They are, they are responsible, if that road sinks, because they were supposed to make sure that road was compacted.
Were they there every day?
Every day.
They were?
Mostly every day, that, that kid was there. Every day marking down stuff, you know who I'm talking about.
Yeah.
He was there almost every day, I'm not saying every day.
Them, that's what I told them guys on Friday, and I called Eads and said, there's a problem in that road.
I am calling tomorrow. Because I'm not gonna go through this no more.
Well, we didn't know about the Mary Ellen Hogans, except for the fact that she said she was coming tonight to talk about.
They kept it from the board, don't blame the board, that was kept from the board. That was all going through the engineers and the agents.
I will call.
We just are discombobled.
I will call tomorrow. Because I am so glad that we spent the money, that we spent the money and had the Eads Group in, not only engineer it, they inspected the whole job. So it was compacted properly and done properly, if it ain't, it comes down on them.
I told them the.
Am I right?
Brandon.
We paid, I can show you the damn bills.
Brandon, the only one that's sinking is the one by Jimmy Elgraff's.
There's two of them, two crooks, and the one down the corner of going into Newtown.
Okay, I haven't made that one down there.
That's sinking, I don't think they packed that good enough. And the one by Jimmy's, I don't think they packed that good enough either. The rest of the road, I think, is holding up fine.
What I told Brian from Eads, you know what I'm saying?
They didn't pack it.
They cut it from where we put the old, the pipes in?
Yeah.
The drainage pipes, they have it cut from there all the way down to Kosminski's. So it's just a great big, it's just a great big French drain, they gotta put a block at the top of that.
Jeremy, I go down every couple of days. And I'm hoping it rains like hell, because that's what's gonna settle it all. It's gonna settle the dirt. And I want it to sink. But if you got a problem, and you don't get an answer up there, you call me, because I'm calling Eads Group tomorrow. I want this crap taken care of, and it's not the board's fault now, it's not the board's problem, it's the Eads Group problem. We paid them, I just paid the bill, twenty-one thousand dollars, we just paid on the table, that's just pay.
I know.
Okay? I want something done.
Right.
It's up to them.
And that's what I told these guys when I talked to Jim that day, Patrick wasn't in the office yet, and I said, hey, that, you guys shouldn't have to go fill that yet. Because what I, I was hoping I was getting that.
I realize that.
And that thing?
That's not our responsibility, we have to.
Did you deliver a tow patch up to the thing?
Yes, they.
For the employees to.
Yes, they, now wait a minute, no, I don't know, I think they had some left or something. Because I asked them at the last meeting, I told Eads Group guy, I said, you go back, I said, I don't mind our guys doing it, but we're gonna get repaid. That is not our job. It's not the township's job.
Right.
The Eads Group gotta stand up for what we paid them for. If they have to go after the, the contractors, then they gotta go after the contractors.
It would have got paid if you wouldn't have brought it up at your meeting the other night though.
What's that?
About billing that back to them.
I brought it up, because I didn't think it was right.
Yeah, but they were almost ready to pay it.
I didn't know about this lady down here in force. And I will do what I can for them.
Now that I know you'll take care of that.
I'll take care of that.
That's a priority.
But what I'm saying, from now on, you got any problems, we didn't spend fifteen thousand dollars for a pu, uh, power gate. We're gonna spend five and put a nice road gate in there, because them swing gates are a pain in the ass. You know what I'm saying, but we are gonna put a, a pushgate. So we didn't spend, it's ten, fifteen thousand dollars, we're not spending that. What I'm saying, if you have a problem, and nobody gives you an answer, call me. And I'll be straight with you. I wanna, and I want you guys to be straight with me too. I don't play games.
Well, I said, some of this, I mean, we got emails here from individuals about, you know.
Okay.
If it's a game.
That's fine.
An individual, why don't you state to that individual, contact the water board?
That's right.
Contact, that should be the first thing out of your mouth, that, since you guys don't know what's going on at the water board, you're making assumptions, because what is on that letter, you're making the assumption, instead of that person, or you guys, should be contacting the water board to get that information. Not because I work there, but that makes common sense, if there's an issue or something you don't know, talk to the people that do know.
Well, that's the thing about it, a lot of this stuff involving the water storage and supervisors, it's gonna even be handled up here.
No, it shouldn't, it shouldn't. And I want to tell you something. Don't listen, you guys listen to Jim Huff. You said it at the last meeting, we just read Jim Huff's letter. You, yeah, sure, just read Jim Huff's letter. Yeah, well, you believed it. You must have believed it. You know what you should do, is say, take it to the water authority, don't take it here.
It should not even be here.
It shouldn't be here, even the storage. Because if you're talking about the storage, you're talking about the people on the storage. You're talking about the water, you're talking about me, and whoever else drove those on it.
You're talking about us.
That's right. But I'm just saying, if I have something to say, believe me, I'll come up here and say it, and I hope you guys do the same. Don't listen to what everybody says.
If you're a taxpayer, or a consumer, you have the right to voice your opinion.
That's right.
Exactly.
Okay, that's all I got to say, but I got that off my chest. I just want the people to belly know that that nineteen thousand was just a drop out of the bucket that we did because we wanted to, we had to do that.
Oh, I hope so.
We had to do that, and we had to put it out for bid. We can't put it out for bid, that's an engineer job, to put it out for bid, bring it back to us, we look it over, take the lowest bid, that's all we can do as board members. So I don't like this letter Jim Huff's doing around telling everybody.
When I.
That we're wrong, and we're this, and we're that. Okay, I just want to set the point straight.
Yeah, and we knew about it back in October, and I attempted to help.
I did, remember, I told you, I didn't know about it.
But to wait until, this is the problem with the engineers, you're paying, I mean, all engineers cost that much money, your engineers or our engineers, we're all using this.
That's right.
But you're paying them that kind of money, you expect.
That's right.
When I first met down there with them, Patrick and Brian.
From me.
Brian said, we're just gonna leave that transite in there because the money won't cover it. And I said, that's, how much can it cost, replace it with your own money, you know? This is a problem that should have been, Ed's solution was leave the transite in there, and that was like, what do you mean?
Alls I know is, we, we all, the storage, township, and water pay the Eads Group a pile of money.
Right.
This time, they're gonna make it right. If I have anything to do with it. Thank you very much.
It shouldn't be you and the board.
That's right.
You shouldn't handle it yourself.
But when I don't know about it.
Yeah.
When I don't know about it, I can't handle it.
We just found that out yesterday.
Well, I didn't know, I know there was problems, but I didn't know.
Monday, I just. Monday.
I found out Monday, and actually I got a phone call.
Well, no problem.
Actually from Carney, and I said, if you can come down and speak.
I wish somebody would have told me it was that bad down there. And now I know, I looked at the road, I see the road who's bad, and they're coming back to fix that. But if something's going in somebody's house, damn it, somebody's gotta do something.
Doing damage, somebody's responsible.
I would think that if you knew about it, you should have stated it to the water company, because nobody, did you know anything about it?
No, that's why I just asked him, I, I heard it. I just heard that, and nobody, nobody brought it up at a board meeting.
Four days ago.
No, she called.
My day, he said.
She called last Friday. He talked to Carney about whatever, but she called here last week and said, she was gonna send somebody to the meeting to talk about a water problem she was having with her driveway. So we just assumed it was, well, you know, oh, there's too much water down my driveway.
I was told.
Somebody at the water board knew about it a long time ago.
Yes, but I was told, I was told, I was told by somebody else that was somebody's house got full of water or something, and from a break in the line or something. But I figured they took care of it, I didn't hear no more about it.
They didn't do anything, but.
Nobody ever come to me and said anything, but, and, and I won't say their name, but they said somebody, they screwed up and they broke a line that went, went in the basement or something, and I, I didn't think much of it, I figured they fixed it. I didn't think it was this bad.
Right.
Because it was never brought up at a board meeting, or something should have been done. And I don't think the rest of the board knew either.
Right.
I think they were trying to keep that a secret or something. But it ain't no secret no more.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Going with business, you guys will never get it.
Keep it a secret, the contractors. Oh, wow, that's just the visitors' comments.
Yeah, prove all the bills.
There's nobody else out there, Brandon?
No.
All of you didn't stick around?
Well, you missed them.
Yeah. Uh, seven minutes after eight. Almost ten after eight. Okay, prove all the minutes, or I'm sorry, the bills.
Jim's ride tonight out there, he's looking, were you looking for your bags, you know what time they were coming back?
I made Washington a boogie bill. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, how many bills? Aye, to the amount of fifty-two thousand, seven seventy-three, fifteen. Okay, treasures report.
The general fund balance as of February eighteenth was a hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred ninety-eight dollars, seventy-nine cents. Balance as of March eighteenth was a hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven dollars, eighty cents. State fund balance as of February eighteenth was eighty-nine thousand, three hundred forty-three dollars, seventy-two cents. Balance as of March eighteenth was two hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars, seventy-eight cents. Plague it balance as of March eighteen, thirteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-one dollars. Capital reserve balance as of March eighteen, um, a hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars. State fund C V balance as of March eighteen, forty thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars. General fund C V balance as of March eighteen, eighty-four thousand, ninety-five dollars. In total, the funds for the month were forty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-two dollars.
Any questions on the treasures report? Okay, correspondence.
J Township Water Authority Meeting Minutes, J Township Sewage Authority Meeting Minutes, Christine Wazey, email supervisor, Bob Coppola, um, C C, letters of Water Authority, email supervisor, Jim Huff, email supervisor, email supervisor.
We normally read their comments under visitors' comments to.
Though why, she had no visitor's comments.
Oh, this was just.
That was just addressed to you, yes, she did not actually email me where the visitor's comment.
On this one here?
That's just for you guys.
Okay. Room maintenance and equipment, anyone to look at that real quick? Any questions on the room maintenance or equipment maintenance reports?
Yeah, we could tell the boys you're doing a hell of a good job.
They, I granted, they, they're doing real good. Guys are working together, doing a good job. Okay, we're gonna move on to old business, flood issues per Z run?
Nothing new.
Nothing new there. Uh, combining the water and sewage boards, which we did visitor's comments, talk about that.
I did send a letter to both of them.
I talked to Lily at the sewage meeting the other night. And I told the water board I was going and I would ask him, so he was supposed to call our secretary and make a time. For us to meet and probably use the garage.
Can I comment on that? Um, Lisa emailed Sharon today and gave her the dates today.
Oh, okay.
And then asked if you guys had other dates.
Yes, that's right. But I did do that, so we either get it going or not get it going, one way or another.
Okay.
There's no problem using it, right?
Yeah.
No, there's no problem using it, yeah, right.
No, but I mean, I did ask him. He said he'd be getting with the secretaries and make some time.
Get a date, okay, okay. Uh, Calonia Pike Bridge.
Uh, nothing right now. Uh, you ever heard anything about some fabricators on the repair? Um, Keith Caruso can do the repair. He's certified and can do that repair. Um, we're still looking for a truck. And I contacted Ed's to get an exact measurement because they didn't give us an exact measurement on that, on the repair. And they contacted Keller that did the inspection because they can't read the numbers on the inspection report. And Keller said, all the information is there. So he's trying to get something resolved there. Uh, but. We got a couple of companies that rent the equipment. We just gotta go down there and take some measurements, figure out how big of a machine we need. And we need to find out from Pendon whether they can put an overweight machine on that bridge to do the.
Well, they have one on there to inspect it.
Yeah, and then, yeah, exactly, because the, uh, the lightest machine they have is twelve ton. So, and it's ten ton.
They said when they inspected, it was bad.
Right.
And actually Keith, like I said, he's interested in doing that. He, he's involved in, he's insured and he actually has that.
The bridge certification to do the work, so that, and he's worked on some bridges and, so he's, it's not out of his real house, but we still have to find something to get him underneath there. Um, so that's, that's our only possibility at the moment because none of these other fabricators.
And Dinsmore.
One of them said they would get back to you, but they didn't have time right now, right? Correct? Something like that?
What? Uh, yeah, McDermott.
McDermott said they would, they would do it, but they're, they can't get it on the schedule right now, so. And then the other thing about the Calonia Pike Bridge is we should hear something by the end of this month on whether or not we get that grant. They told us March, but they've kicked that can down the road three times, so it might move again, you know what I mean?
Almost two weeks left here, so.
Yeah, so that's, that's all we got right now.
Okay, uh, move on to D.C.N. Orton and Calonia Pike Road.
Still sitting in Harrisburg.
Everything's in Harrisburg, yeah.
And we did have Stephanie follow up with it as well as Jamie talk to the local people here, so hopefully they're putting some pressure on to get it moving.
Okay, uh, ordinance update?
Hey, that's what you're here for. Oh, me? Okay, I thought you were putting an update to the ordinance. Yeah, I have, uh, five letters that'll be going out probably by the end of the week. Um, I took photos of everything we've gotten complaints about except for one property. And, uh, that's my update.
Yeah, hopefully we resolve some problems, I hope.
Yeah, yeah.
May I ask you, the couch that sits out in Burndale off of the road, is that? An ordinance violation? It's been there for six months?
Actually, that would be.
Yes, if you know whose it is.
Is it in front of somebody's property?
Uh, yeah, take a drive down Burndale, there's a couch and a pile of garbage that's been there for.
Oh, four.
It's in this, right there where the house parked down. So it's in, I don't know.
Oh, you mean over by the old wooden church?
Right across from the senior center, the old senior.
Oh, the old round side street, yeah. Oh, I thought.
Oh, there's about four places up there.
Oh, okay.
So is that a ordinance violation?
Yeah, yeah. And we have fours here. If you ever wanna fill something up for something, you're welcome.
Is that something being looked at?
That one was not, I was not aware of it, but.
Actually, she, she's calling up on the issues that we set up letters in the past. He's starting with them. Well, I know your place probably full and I'm just.
Yeah, no, I did take a look at it. Uh, which brings me, oh, to one more thing too. I need an address for a trailer in force that's. Sits at the end of the road.
They'll look it up on the task.
Yeah, I got pictures of it, but I couldn't find.
You know which one she's talking about?
I'll get one there. I'll get one there.
Okay.
That's it.
Are we good there?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, water authority vacancy terminating December twenty-twenty-five. Okay. Uh, we do have, we've got another name added, so I'm gonna start with, uh, for Patrick Walkovich. Do we have a motion? Put it back on the board? Do, do we have a motion? Okay, and we move on. Stacy Snyder, a motion for Stacy to be put on the board? Do we have a motion for Stacy Snyder? Okay, third, Joey Birdy. Do we have a motion to put Joey Birdy on the water board? Do we have a motion for Joey Birdy? And we gained another one since last meeting. Julie Kome, did I pronounce it right?
Kumamoto.
Kumamoto. Do we have a motion to put Julie on the water board?
I'll make the motion to put Julie Kumamoto on the water board.
Do we have a second?
I abstain.
I'll second the motion all in favor.
Aye.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? Is she actually a resident?
She is.
So, uh, she has property and she pays the water bill?
She lives in Scabbard Town with her boyfriend.
Yeah, she's a resident. So the water bill is in her name?
Probably in his name.
I mean, you have, you gotta be fair about this guy. I give Patrick the third degree and I have nothing against Julie. She could be a good, good person. I don't know.
You can be a resident, you can be a resident without paying any bills.
Uh, do you know what the, what you have to be to be on the water board?
No.
Fran, Ethan, go ahead.
Listen, you guys were all wrong on that last month too. The storage authority number one, you don't have to be.
A consumer.
A consumer of the storage, you could be on the board.
On the storage?
On the storage, but you have to be ownership or live in the community. The water authority, you don't have to have ownership. You guys had no right asking for his ownership. The water authority says you need a water, you have to be a water customer. Your name only have to be on there. Because I rent, you know, my little house down back, my nephew lives there, and I get in as a rental, okay? But he pays the bill. I could come up here and say, he pays the bill. He's a water customer. He does not have to own. I looked through the whole thing the other night.
He doesn't have to own anything. The municipal, the municipal authorities act, Brandy, you're reading the.
You were supposed to be on here. He was, he didn't know nothing in the valley, did he?
Oh, no.
Okay, he was on here because he was a, he was a water customer.
Right, but he was a renter.
Okay, well, why did you ask what's his name if he had ground in this place?
Because he's not a resident. The municipal authorities act says you have to be a resident, a business owner, or a pro, a taxpayer.
Always was.
That's the bylaws of the, your actual board that says you have to be a consumer.
Always you have to be a consumer.
The actual municipal authorities act that's the state of Pennsylvania says you have to be these things. That's, that's it. That's it there. I could, I could print it off on a book for you.
They never used that. They always use you had to be a water customer.
Well.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Well, this would be on the fair side. You give Patrick the third degree on that, on being a water customer, being that, and I'm not favoring anybody. Like I said, Julie could be a good girl or whatever. First thing. Does she get a bill in her name?
Well, Dana doesn't pay for it.
She doesn't have to. Is she a resident? Is she, is she married?
No, he doesn't.
Her driver's license is weak, you know.
Oh, I don't know.
She has an address here.
Some of the questions that you guys assign, you guys assign, uh, to pick the board members, that should be some of the questions that you guys.
You know, we, she has an address and we built and she has water service at her home.
Jim, right there it is. You wanna read it? Okay, there it is.
But I'm just saying, I was always just the water.
No, the municipal authorities act says you have to be one of those three things before it gets to the bylaws of the authority.
They never used that. They always, being a water customer of the town.
You can change your by, not you, but I mean, a person can change your bylaws any way they want.
I'm just saying. I'm not for being fair with everybody.
Okay, to answer the question a little more fairly is, I would rather have somebody that lives in our community serve on that board than somebody that chose to move out. Okay, that's, that's the way that I feel about it.
But I know we always just picked as long as.
Tell them something here.
Yes.
You have a corporation, okay, it's incorporated, the water, the water authority is incorporated. They have some bylaws, okay? Uh, don't you think that that corporation and, and those, and they have bylaws? Don't you think that all these candidates who apply for the position should go to the board and let Brandy and, and, and the board? Look at these guys and see what they think. Chris Secretary, who would be designated for the, for the continuity of the board?
For their onboard, yes, certainly.
I absolutely.
That's what I'm saying. If you guys just pick out, show them whoever you're on board with and, and send them up there to serve on the board.
We don't, we don't pick the board.
Joey Birdy just lives up on the hill, so that just makes him, he's not in the community.
Well, he, he has property in the community with water.
That's what I'm saying.
He's a, he's a, he's a payer.
He pays, he pays a water.
And a resident.
He pays the water bill.
A resident is the biggest thing for me, Brandy. I mean, it's just, if you, if you're not living here, why would you have a say here?
I never heard that far as higher law. I mean, fly a quick.
And it's not only that, I love, I, I'm the one that fought and put him on the board as an operator. Everybody thought it was a bad idea. Well, I guess what? I made a mistake.
I'm not saying.
I made a mistake.
I'm not saying either way. All I'm saying is, they never argued that point. All they worried about is being a water customer.
Control over everything to be the operator and the main guy speaking for the board and all the rest, you know? I mean, I know he's not your chairman, but he does most of the talking.
But I'm just saying, alls I ever remember is a water customer. That's all our rules say. Go ahead, Al.
You know, when I look at the, at the, uh, on board, uh, their, their, their list of members, okay? It showed six members. And I thought that, that Walkovich was on the board, okay? Simply sitting there but having no vote, okay? Uh, or Ian put in the meeting just sitting there as an observer because he was the works manager. I did not realize that there, there was six member board there.
No, it's five. Yeah. There, one time it was seven, and then before that it was even higher. It just keep, we keep reducing.
Saying that the listing on, on, on here shows six members.
Right.
Okay, that's actually happened.
Might be the secretary. The secretary's not a member of the board, so that might be what you're seeing there.
And we are having a meeting in June and we're having open meetings on the computer for the next two months.
Well, that goes a long way. That's why you're only talking about some of these problems the way you're hearing it.
In June, there will be an open meeting. We already discussed that. It's on my website and everything else. So the next two is gonna be on the computer.
But Patrick's still your operator. He's still gonna attend your meetings. He's still gonna have input and that's extracted. But I think it's a better mix to have him in that role, sitting there answering your board's questions than the way it's set up. And I, I was instrumental on getting him on the board, but we didn't have any options at the time. You know, that's not the issue. I don't have an issue with Patrick. I just think that it works better when that, those positions are separate. You follow where I'm coming from?
I, I have no problem. I just had to send that point out that we, there was always just a water customer. That's all. All right.
Okay, we took care of that. Uh, advertisement for a certified public accountant for an audit?
I need a motion.
Motion, uh, advertise for one?
No, I need a motion to approve.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
And it's on our. Motion for Trexel Associates complete the twenty-twenty audit for the price not to exceed forty-eight hundred dollars. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried, uh, for Trexel and Associates to be our audit for two thousand twenty. Okay. Now remove dust oil bids.
I'm gonna check the kid on my side. Cause she is. She's out there.
I'll try to do it.
Here, I'll take you out.
Because, because there are authorities. The municipal authorities are township.
Okay, we have a meeting. The first bid is from Jefferson Hayden.
Only two dollars.
This is your. Honestly, I read that.
How much?
Two dollars.
Wow, who's that from? Jefferson?
Wow, double check it.
What's the quarter? What number are we on?
This is, we're under a dust oil bid for the road for summer. That was Jefferson Hayden.
That's what it is, two dollars.
I watch you.
English tonight. Five dollars two ninety.
We got something, are we gonna do a few machines in there? Okay, this is from Russell Standard. Uh, twenty thousand gallon unit price is two dollars point one nine three. You double check.
Two nineteen?
Two ninety.
And we have one from Midland. Okay, Midland Furnish and Place twenty thousand gallons, three more or less, various township roads as needed, a dollar ninety-two a gallon.
Wow.
It's two of those wells going up.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Price of oil, how, how they're doing.
Last year was what, two oh eight? Russell Sanderson, two nineteen. Jefferson, two, and Midland, one.
Probably have to give him lunch too. I forgot about it.
One ninety-two.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Wow, we haven't had that cheap in years.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for Midland.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried to Midland for the oil at a dollar ninety-two per gallon. Okay, dumpster bid, one. There's only ever one. Well, if anything else does that drop, maybe the dumpsters are on. Uh, this is from Elk Waste Services, a forty yard trucking fee of two hundred eighty-five dollars per pull. The landfill is forty-six dollars per ton.
Think it was a little more than last year, right? Two seventy-five or something last year. Sorry.
You're fine.
One of these years you'll figure out I'll ask that question.
I know.
Did you get a bid for the salt thing yet or not?
Yeah, we, we got a lot of.
Oh, I missed it.
Concrete worth part.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're digging it out with the services and all, so.
Um, it's two fifty-nine for the truck fee and forty-three per ton.
Wow, dump dumpster. They're coming for, uh, me, I will fuel.
They're, they're losing out on like almost fifty-two ninety dollars in grant money with recycling and stuff this year they took away.
Well, okay, we, we have a motion?
Motion.
I second it. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried to Elk Waste to do our dumpster. Okay, we're gonna move on to two fifty-four, yeah, two fifty-four Henlock Allen Repository Property Purchase Application was submitted. To the county, waiting for them to approve the application and start the demo project.
We need to make a formal motion to approve the purchase of that because we didn't do that last month. And then we talked about it at length. That old building of Rico's down there by the doctor's office, county's gonna give us like twelve thousand five hundred dollars to help. Not gonna be enough, but it'll be majority of the cost. Get rid of it.
I mean, when you do that, I wanna take my launcher down and watch.
Make a motion on that line.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the dumpster cause we didn't do that last month.
Okay, I'll second it. Do we have a second, Dave? You made it?
He made the motion.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carried.
Who did the question?
Me.
Are you guys gonna sell that property then or?
Yeah, that's, um, we don't, I have really slow to answer back at the county, but I believe we take ownership of it. We gotta bid it out to be downloaded. They're gonna give us that twelve thousand five hundred. That's all they have to give us right now. They've spent the rest of this year as far as what they have for that. And then the idea is to get it cleaned back up and backed up for sale so somebody puts it back on the tax plate.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a whole process to it though, so that's, yeah, we don't have it. We're, we don't want it. You know, we're not gonna go down there and send our guys down there to blow waste.
There's some people in the valley I think are interested in that property.
Yeah, I think once it's all cleaned up, somebody's gonna buy it. It's just.
Like for a house?
I don't know. Or just to make it look a little nicer down Henlock. I hope, I mean, it's a start, so. Okay, we're good there. Let's go on new business. Recreation Board term ending December two thousand twenty-one. That's just for this year.
Just for this year? I'll make a motion to put Nancy on the recreation board.
Yeah.
Find, find two more friends. We still have two openings on that recreation.
I know. I gotta talk.
Most of you, Jeremy, you died.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, I still have my idea in time, in mind about the Burndale. Well, I still have my idea in time, in mind about the Burndale building there.
Take it to the recreation board. I said, there's two more terms. Anybody else want to get somebody?
Nobody else on that board.
There's three people on there now with Nancy, but there's five seats.
There's two opening, Jim.
They used to only meet like maybe four times a year, but.
It's just a regular seat, right?
They plan all the stuff out at the.
Yeah, they only, like I said, every three months.
I mean, it's not a lot of hard to see during anything, right?
Yeah, you'll just come in like this. Honestly, no, I don't think anybody ever comes to their meetings.
I know, I came once and.
And they're like, oh, what are you doing here?
Jerry, I wish you would suggest to them if they have a monthly dating.
I just don't think that there's been that much.
Activity.
Activity, but, well.
But I can't.
You have enough activity, did you?
Okay, we good there? Okay, let's move on to ATV riders, the easement.
Yeah, okay, where is that?
See email from over.
Yeah, Calumon.
Well, we can just make a motion to approve the easement, but before we do that, let's say we talked to, she talked to Rupner today and make sure we have, everything's in there except for the overall length. I think we have to get a.
Four hundred.
Oh, you did get the length one, a thirteen feet, run four hundred feet.
Excuse me.
Yep. So if that's all filled in, um, that's what came back from our solicitor. That protects us. And while granting them the easement is good for ten years. After ten years, we have to extend it and write it. Uh, if, if not, then it reverts back to the township we own and create.
So after they, full ownership, liabilities on them?
And, and, but after ten years, if we don't extend it out because we're having, say, trouble with it, people can link, whatever, then it'll, it'll revert back to the township, so.
Where's that at?
Goes across from, coming between Fridays and, and, uh, Whitehurst.
Yeah.
It's gonna come out there, it's gonna cross the highway. They gotta, they gotta permit to cross the highway, so behind the wall, you'll get it.
Yeah, I remember you talking.
And then the bridge is gonna cross the stream over there by, uh, Wa, onto Washington Street.
That's good.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carried, the easement with riders, ATV riders. So is that open, that's open to riders now?
No, there's no bridge there now.
No, no, no. Where do you get, where do you enter if you wanna ride there to your ATV or your TV up there? When this is put in, you're gonna cross Cleveland Street? Yeah, I relate that, but where do you exit? How do you get out? You're gonna cross Kersey Run right close to Debbie Look Tax. Yeah, that's all, yeah. Why don't you go down there past the coke ovens?
Well, that's. The coke oven, they got, they got an easement from.
Rosebud.
Rosebud to go through the coke ovens, uh, out to Apple Street up here, the dump road. It's gonna connect.
So that gate's gonna be open? There's, there's a gate there, ain't there?
Yeah.
That's John Bryson's gate. John Bryson's gate?
Yeah, it's not that road. It's not, they're, they're gonna be, they're gonna be cutting one in there, a path here. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, they're putting a road in?
Yeah, they gave him, they gave him, Rosebud gave him an easement through there, a certain area.
Well, that's nice.
Yeah, they got that one locked down before, and then they came to us for this after that. Yeah, cause that's what, it's a throughway. Which will be, make it connect to the other townships all the way to that, is that really?
So what, we're gonna have to wait till a guy comes back in, we'll be under the loader tires? Taking tires this year? Electronics will be the same way from Disney, but one Saturday, electronics.
Make sure when the recycling center in St. Mary's too, because like you said, there's a thing that they're dropping recycling dollars out of the state budget.
What's gonna prevent you from people sneaking a tire in there? Are you gonna put camera up? You know it's gonna happen. You know it's, people are gonna take a tire up there and drop it off. There's nobody there.
If somebody tosses in one tire and it's buried under there, how many?
No, you know there's gonna be people.
But if somebody comes in with a truckload of them, they're gonna get sent back out the door.
Danny keeps.
She doesn't let much get by. The guys are here during, in and out during the day. It's never open when, when there's no one here.
I hope the county don't stop taking the tires like I do, cause the county takes, I gotta go get a permit and they take my tires.
Yeah.
I take fifty tires a year in. I can't take them to the dump. See, you can't, you can't haul tires or anything if you're a business. You gotta have a permit. So I go over to the county and they give me a permit, and I give them a donation, so I hope they're still gonna do that. What am I gonna do with my tires?
The recycling funding is tanked now, right now. They took it away from saving state money.
We'll have to find out.
Uh, loader tires, right?
Okay, uh, loader tires, quote from actually Goodyear price, but.
That's awesome.
It's good tire.
Oh.
Don't worry. And you have Goodyear. Yeah, don't worry. It's good tire. Uh, please come into township, put the tires in, tires and tires themselves, take them off, break them, put the sealing in and all that, through thirty-four eighty. Actually, I mentioned to the guys today, uh, check Valley Tire. They're around here. I think around Indiana maybe, or Homer City.
Okay.
I think we gotta get another price each. And we don't need them tomorrow, so I mean, between now and next meeting. Cause originally we're gonna get two, then they figured, well, the other one, they can last longer, so we got it. They did give us a couple hundred bucks cheaper. But I think we're gonna just table that till we get another bid at least.
All right.
Okay, then we have an assessment permit?
Yeah, two now, right?
Two now, okay. Uh, first one is Nissy, the clinic at twenty-one Lincoln Street, Burndale. It's a shed, storied shed, eight by sixteen. It's gonna be on a gravel base, construction metal. No water service provided, no wastewater. Must be put right alongside another shed.
Yeah.
We do have separators. We do, okay. Uh, the other one is Thomas and Rebecca Yannick at fifteen fifty-three Bucktail Road, St. Mary's. The property is on Josephine Road. It's a building sixty by forty, block foundation. Uh, type, it must be all block, masonry construction. It's gonna be a garage. Uh, present building notes, service to be, water service provided by St. Mary's Water Authority. On what? Explain a perk test tested for the sand now. That's the individual where they cut the, remember we were up there, you were with me or one of the guys when they logged out up there and never had a, maybe one, maybe.
Josephine Road is a private road, not our, not our.
That's a township road.
No, it's pri, it's in, it's in Jay Township. They pay taxes, but we don't own the road. It's a private road. That's the one out in St. Mary's, is what that is.
No, no, Hilltop, off McGovern.
Oh, is that Josephine?
Yeah, Josephine. The McGovern.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe you didn't go with.
I didn't go with you. Did somebody log in on that road?
That's the logging.
Oh, yeah, we had a, that was like a year ago.
Yeah. So they put a block garage here? Yeah, it was probably last year we went.
St. Mary's Water goes there, uh.
To their, I think it quits right by, close to Joe's House to NASA's. Or the next, the next one, probably robbery's in there, and I think my, you want St. Mary's water here too. Is there a picture in the background?
Yeah, forty by sixty, okay. It's perk tested. Did you get a notice from Russ?
I, he just handed it to me tonight, so I don't know nothing about it.
He just probably did tonight.
Well, I mean, I have no prob, I have no problem approving it. Follow up with Russ. Make sure that he's aware of that because perk tested for sand now, sounds like it was, you know? I'll make a motion to approve the two, uh, permits.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried for both assessments, two minutes.
Just make sure you follow up with Russ, make sure.
Okay, so we're good. Do we have any German?